All right, I've got five o'clock. Looks like we have books here. We have a court, right? Yeah, one, two, three, four. Perfect. Okay. All right, so it is five o'clock on Monday, March 8th. This is a village board meeting for the Village of Oregon. Do ask for a roll call, please.
Peterson.
Here.
Glash.
Here.
Stitch. Olig.
Olig here.
Harpenter.
Here.
And Jacobson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we're at that point of the meeting where we are opening it up for community input. This is the part of the agenda where anyone from the community has something that they'd like to share with us or tell us. We're happy to listen. We can't take action because it won't be on the agenda, but we can always put it on a future agenda. So is there anyone from the community who would like to speak?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Scott Meyer. Yes, please go ahead. Please identify yourself with your name and address.
My name, Scott Meyer, 185 Chelsea Court in the Village of Oregon. Reporting in tonight for activities at Genesis Housing. Our grant with the Federal Home Loan Bank of Chicago, as you recall, back coming up on two years, it'll be two years in May. Most of you were present on the village board at the time and you allowed us a grant of $168,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund. And we were able to leverage that nearly five times with the Federal Home Loan Bank grant from them, the amount of nearly $825,000. And I just wanted to pop into night to report that as of last week, that money is finally in town. It was a long haul and a lot of red tape and a lot of paperwork and a lot of happenstance with COVID and everything else. It's taken a lot longer than we had initially planned, but the money is here. It's in a trust account and we can start putting it to work very soon. So I just want to report in and thank everybody on the board. Thank everybody on the staff. Just about everybody downtown got emails from me needing information and stuff for our grant application. Randy helped with MOUs, Rachel at the Senior Center, Mike and Lisa, just everybody was involved in this and it it couldn't have turned out better. It's going to position Genesis Housing to last at least another 50 years in the community. On another note, you may recall where we operate under the USDA's Rural Development Agency. At the time, a time of our grant application nearly two years ago, we had them providing 38 of our tenants rental assistance monthly. They've been so pleased with our progress and everything that's happened. They've awarded us another 15 units of rental assistance. So we now have 53 of our 56 apartments covered with rental assistance as long as the tenants are qualified for that assistance. So another huge, huge win for Genesis Housing and the community.
Well, that is an excellent report, Scott.
I thought you'd like to hear it. Pop in and make that report. Now, if anybody has any questions, but.
Jeannie, just to comment, Scott, congratulations on that. I know this was a big, it was a big deal. We went to meetings and listened and we knew that the grants were really competitive, but we pulled it off and it's a great thing, great thing under your leadership too and your board and it's a great thing for the village.
And people start seeing lots of, lots of improvements coming real soon with hopefully with COVID winding down and vaccinations ramping up and we did a number of things last year, more, you know, outdoor in nature, but with, with things improving now, hopefully we can get inside and, and start making bigger improvements. So, and like I say, the money is in the bank and ready to spend. So that, that's my report.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Meyer. Always nice to see you at a village board meeting.
I'll stop back again sometime.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Yep. All right. Do we have any other community input tonight? Doesn't look like it. All right. We'll keep going. So item four is public appearances. First one is a discussion with the community, Oregon Community Access Media. Regarding the following, we have three things. We're going to review the revised bylaws. Number two is OCA Media providing a quarterly report to the village board. And number three, discuss disbanding the village's cable TV committee. So I'll let whoever I'd like to take charge of this one start talking.
I'll, I'll speak.
All right, cool.
Tom Kirchdorfer, I live at 25 Fairway Meadows Court here in Oregon. I'm the president of the, what's currently the Oregon Foundation. A number of you might remember a number of years ago, we came and there was a activity that we were undergoing to try to reestablish the mission and vision and purpose and all of the basic strategic directions of the the organization. And one of the things we ran into is that the bylaws that were originally drafted in 1987 somehow don't exactly match up with what we are doing. As the original bylaws were really intended to be a foundation organization through which funds flowed to benefit other, other entities. And as a byproduct of that, they also said, and when you get some time, run a cable station. Over time, basically that's what we began, that's, that's really the sole purpose of what the organization is today. And as we talked about our mission and purpose and functions, it wasn't just a simple matter of making a few changes in the bylaws. We determined that we really needed to replace them and create something that was a little more modern, a little more current with current functionality, electronic approvals and all of those things. So Amanda Peterson and I drafted together a set of bylaws almost a year ago now. These all got delayed, of course, with the COVID issues that we all experienced. These bylaws that we're proposing is, is different in a couple of important ways. First off is changes the name of the organization from being the Oregon Foundation to the Oregon Community Access Media Incorporated. This is more in line with what we do and who we are and what we're trying to be. It also removes some of the provisions that, that we're not just a cable station. We're actually a community access program. So this plays into all that work that we're doing these days in social media as well as the YouTube channels, the streaming and people right now are streaming, watching this, this, this video. It's all being done through Oregon Community Access station. So, and, and you can do it on YouTube. You can, you can do it live on both TDS and as well as the Charter Broadcast Services. That was, that was our purpose. That's why we really started out on down this whole path of replacing the bylaws. And there are other incremental changes. There are some changes to some directors. There are some other changes to how many directors we can have. Sometimes we've had tough times when we have such a broad constituency of people here in Oregon, sometimes staying just within a certain number was a little bit difficult. So this gives us a little more flexibility with that regard. There's a few other minor changes when we presented these draft bylaws to Mike and Matt. One of the things that came back through is the redlined portions there where you see some changes and some edits that were clearly up in the first section. Basically what in the existing bylaws, there was actually statements that required the village to appoint someone, a appoint a trustee to our Board of Directors. That was sort of when having a document that requires the village was something Matt wasn't quite comfortable. He was much more comfortable that we would be giving then opportunity to name someone to the village board. And it doesn't have to be a trustee. It'd be whoever the village president would feel is appropriate. This is just sort of kind of, and I, Matt might be able to speak to this a little bit better than I, I can. But it's basically relieving the requirements on the village to have to take, have a liability or responsibility to take an action. The same token, then at the very end, the, the bylaws also required the approval of the, the old bylaws required the approval of the village for us to, to update or revise them or make any changes to them. Again, this was a caution case where having a requirement of the village was something that seemed to be a good idea that we not require any longer. It's really focuses as, as an organization on that mission and that purpose that, that we're, we're trying to accomplish these days, which is disseminate information about what's going on in Oregon. That's the bylaw changes that doesn't really require the board's approval. I don't know if there's any action that needs to be taken, Mike or Matt. I don't know if you could speak to that.
No, no action by the board.
Okay. Matt, I don't know if you wanted to speak to those provisions of the changes in the, that you had made.
Well, all I would say is you did a nice job of summarizing the changes and my goal was to, to really recognize that this is an independent nonprofit organization. It's not, it's not a, a unit of, it's not like a subunit of village government where, you know, it needs village approval, for example, to change the bylaws or, or where it makes sense for the village to be required to appoint someone to your board of directors. So those were the, that, that was kind of the, the thinking behind some of these changes, behind my changes.
Any questions on any of that, just before we go on or? Right now, there's no process in place for us to do any official reporting back to the village. And when our, in our discussions, it seemed like we should put in place a process where a regular report of our activities and finances be provided to the village. We haven't quite worked out the format or what all needs to be in that. For the time being, I would say that would probably be delivered by the trustee that's part of the, the board of the OCA Media. Or I would be able to attend either one. I'm saying that man is on the phone. I don't know how she feels about that, but we talked to her about it. But basically we would, we would commit to having a quarterly report. We're meeting right now on a monthly basis. And we would be able to provide updates to the village at any time. We don't have any secrets. We're not trying to keep any secrets from anybody or anything like that, but, and we're more than happy with our relationship. So a lot of the, a lot of this comes down to is what we're trying to do is clean up everything to, to be in line with what we're doing anyway. So that's, that's really what the intent is here in all of these is discussion.
Very good.
The, the final point, I guess that was something when we first started talking about these bylaws and so forth, that we had to spend a, you know, 15, 20 minutes trying to explain to Matt exactly why we had a TV subcommittee that was the same as our village, as our OCA Board of Directors. It sort of seemed like a redundant situation. It doesn't really serve to any, any purpose as far as we, except that we have to keep two sets of minutes. We have to follow some meeting rules. But it doesn't really help anything. And you certainly still have all the same controls. You have a village trustee currently on our board. You can maintain representation on our Board of Directors. You still also prove what would, we would continue the same process of coming and asking for funding for the upcoming year, each year with the same sort of process that we have. So really all of this seems like a lot of stuff, but basically all we're trying to do is get it to be where it's cleaned and what we're doing now.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Mike.
And, and for the village board to disband the cable TV committee, Matt, Matt would have to prepare an ordinance and we, right now, I think we talked about that and.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Questions for Tom or staff on this? Anyone, anyone opposed to anything that Tom's suggesting? Oh yeah, go ahead.
But just to comment that, you know, the OCA Media, the board has done a tremendous job doing this housekeeping. I mean, it's, it's been a pleasure to serve on that board. Some very knowledgeable and competent people and they, this is a lot of hard work doing all the housekeeping and getting up to speed. So I'm, I'm happy they're at a point now where they can move on to this next phase. So I'm excited about the future. They're, they're really just doing a tremendous job on social media, you know, with COVID, their, their views have gone up. They've, they're thriving right now and it's, it's fun to watch. So.
Thank you.
Mike, do you, do you need any action by the board to, for the disbanding the TV committee or will that come back to us?
It'll come back to you.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Sounds like, sounds like we're on board with everything that you're doing, Tom. We appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah. Yeah. Please pass our thanks on to, on to your, on to your board as well. You guys have been doing a lot of work.
I suspect they're listening.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you. We appreciate it. All right. We'll keep going then. Item 4B. This is a public hearing. We have Terry A. Ziegel Meyer, leader, agent for the Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse 2 LLC. Has filed an application for a Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B intoxicating liquor, which this is a Class B combo alcohol beverage license with a village clerk for the Village of Oregon for the property at 135 South Main Street, doing business as Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse and Ice Cream Parlor in Oregon, Wisconsin. So I will open the public hearing and then the next item is staff reports. Any staff reports?
Is Candy online here? I think I saw her.
I am online.
There she is.
So basically all of, all this are why we're doing this public hearing is Ziggy's would like to have the full Class B license. Currently they have a Class B fermented malt and Class C wine license. But they would like to have the full Class B license. So they're basically taking over Charlie's Unmain. Surrendered their license and they're applying for one now.
So Candy, is there, is there like only a certain number of these that we can issue as a village? Is that the deal?
Yes. Yes. The intoxicating liquor part of it, there are quotas on it. Now, we only have eight, I think we have eight regular and then the rest of them are reserves and we can up our reserves every time our population increases by 500. We have plenty of reserves available, but this is not a reserve.
And Candy, you want to explain to the board what the reserve it means?
Oh yeah, that would help, wouldn't it? The reserve part is the required $10,000. Does that make sense for everybody?
And that $10,000, like it's no longer reimbursable or something?
As I said, you can't do that.
It's not reimbursable.
They stopped us from doing that. Yep.
Okay. So I'm confused. Can we just the, the business pays $10,000 to get the license and that is non-refundable?
For a reserve license.
Yep.
Okay. And that reserve license is different from the?
It's, there's a regular Class B, which we have a certain number of, and that number will never change unless they change the quota on that. It was, Matt, wasn't it in 1997 they did that?
I don't think it was that long ago, but it's been a while now.
Yeah, I think, I thought it was 1997, but.
I think, I think I was, I think I was in Toma when they did that. So yeah, I think you're right, Candy.
This is the state legislature or who we?
Well, yes. So here, here's the story.
Yeah, catch us up.
Yeah. So once upon a time, we had just regular, you know, combination Class B licenses, although there was a, there was a limit on the number that could be issued in the municipality. And that number could, could increase over time based on increases in population. Then there was a change in the law, I think encouraged by the industry that supports the tavern industry. Yeah, to essentially require that any additional licenses in the community beyond the, the number of regular Class B that existed at that point in time, that, that going forward, any, any additional combination Class B licenses would be called reserve licenses and would be subject to this $10,000 fee. Now, a cynical person would say that that was done in order to limit new competition coming into the community. But I'm not all that cynical. So I don't know if that was really what was going on, but, but that, but some people might think that. And then communities responded by finding a way to refund that $10,000. And that was, that worked for a while. And then the legislature came back and, and made it pretty much impossible to refund that $10,000. So where we are today is that there's a fixed number of licenses that do not cost $10,000. And some people have those, some people don't. When those come, when one of those becomes available, obviously it's worth $10,000. And so there's a fixed number of those. The number of those I don't believe will ever change. Any, any, any additional combination Class B licenses that are available and will ever become available in the village under current law, those are the reserve Class B and they cost $10,000.
So a question on that, how do those, how do you determine who gets the next one? I mean, if there were more than one business that wanted one, is there like a running list of first come, first served or?
There, right now, the way it's handled in the Village of Oregon is first come, first served. There is no other protocol that's been established to address that issue. Candy, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Randy, go ahead. Oh hey, Randy, you're still muted.
Are we at our limit for the fixed ones?
So currently we have six regular licenses, but we have 12 reserves and we have plenty of reserves available. We actually have one, two, we have nine reserves available. So there's plenty of, plenty of.
But we're max, we're, we're maxed out of the regular ones.
All right. So someone, someone else came before us and wanted one.
$10,000.
The next one, they would have to pay $10,000.
Correct.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Unless, unless someone else with a regular license would surrender theirs.
Okay.
Which is what happened in this instance.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you for that background info. That's.
Chapter 125 for you.
We, we do love chapter 125.
All right. So any more staff reports? All right. Petitioner comments? Looks like you guys are on the call. Any comments from Terry or Ziggy? Oh, it looks like you guys are muted. So just unmute yourselves. I know. Technology is great. Elise, can you unmute them?
I sent them a request asked to unmute.
Oh, okay.
It's the little bottom, it's a, looks like a microphone mute bottom left corner. There you go.
Okay. Uh huh.
First timers here, come on.
All right. Well, welcome. Yeah. So you want to just tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Well, you know, the last one on five years now, you know, we, we've had our regular beer and wine license and we get a lot of questions, you know, do you guys have brand new fashions or something like that? You know, and we don't. So you know, after so many people had, you know, asked, it's like, why don't we apply, you know, for one? Here we are, but we're not looking to open a bar, you know, for barbecue, you know, and recently pizza and ice cream parlor. So we want to remain that, but you know, we want to be able to give these people, you know, kind of what they want. And we're not looking to have 15, 20 drinks. We're just looking at you know, maybe nine drinks, you know, a brand new fashionist, Wisconsin's. Build off of that, you know, with our barbecue and then pair up a couple of good bourbons, you know, and that, you know, people really enjoy with the barbecue. So it's really the extent of what we want to go with, you know, them, the extra alcohol license onboard. We're not going to make our bars any bigger under our bar. I mean, that's going to say the same. We don't really anticipate people then sitting at the bar and drinking at it, you know, because we, we're a barbecue restaurant, right? So that's pretty much, you know, why we're applying for this today.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comments? Anyone on the Zoom call that wants to speak from the public? That looks like a no. All right. Village Board members, any comments or questions here for the petitioner? Oh yes, go ahead, Amanda.
Hi, I was just curious if you intended to put up any signage at your place to advertise the fact that you can serve those drinks now, or are you just going to, you know, let people know through word of mouth or?
Word of mouth, pretty much. We're not going to have any signage, you know, anything like that on the building. You know, I think that what we have is suitable for what we're doing. So, you know, people are just going to know. We've told several people that we're applying, so they're, they're waiting for, you know, an answer. Also, I mean, we get accepted and, you know, that'll be our advertisement right there. I think, you know, it's not like we're going to be, we might put something on Facebook, you know, letting people know. So if you didn't come to Ziggy's to get barbecued, because we did have a brand new fashion or some bourbon, you know, then maybe they might not come. We have had that right away. And when we first opened up after we got our beer and wine license, you know, we had some people say, do you have any whiskey or anything like that? You know, and we at least are honest with us about it, but you know, at the same time, you know, we are, we are applying. So no, the answer is definitely not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Jenna?
Just going to say it sounds like an exciting pairing. So.
Chief, any, any, oh, sorry, you're eating. But I was gonna say, chief, any concerns on this one? And you could just wave no.
No, I, um, we had a great conversation and I actually think that the application that's in the packet was not signed by me, but I have signed it and I submitted it back to, to Candy. Everything I looked at looked top notch. So.
Okay. Very good. All right. Then I will go ahead and close the, the hearing. And then our next item here then is discussion and possible action regarding the approval of the application for a Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B intoxicating liquor. This is a Class B combo alcohol beverage license with a village clerk for the Village of Oregon for the property at 135 South Main Street, doing business as Ziggy's Barbecue Smokehouse and Ice Cream Parlor. So if anyone's ready to make that motion, you can go for it. All right. Yes, a motion by Stitch and a second by Jacobson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Did someone say opposed? No, we're thinking.
It was just a late aye.
No worries. No worries. Okay. So unanimous ayes, right? Okay, cool. All right. So looks like you guys are ready to go ahead, Ziggy's and I don't, I don't know if ever drank bourbon, but you know, I might have to start now. So.
Brand new old fashions. That's what I'll stick with.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much. And I'm sure Candy will follow up with you. Right Candy? Yep. All right. Okay. Thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now, how do we get to the Zoom call?
All right. Oh, thank you. All right. We will keep on a truck in here. So next is number five, approval of minutes. So we have minutes from the July 13th meeting to the July 22nd meeting and the August 3rd meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those? Motion by Glash, second by Jacobson. All right. Any discussion or questions on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? All right. Now we have vouchers. We have vouchers in the amount of $366,529 and $30. We have vouchers in the amount of $366,529.35 cents, um, up for approv, our approval tonight. Would someone like to make a motion to approve to get those on the table?
So moved.
All right, motion by, yep, Jacobson and second by Glish. Uh, do we have questions for staff and on anything on the vouchers? Does not look like it. All right, so I would ask for a roll call for approval, please.
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
And Balik?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. All right, proclamations and announcements, do we have any board comments for tonight? That seems like a no, all right. Staff comments. First one is the open book and board of review dates, Peggy. Anything that you'd see about this?
So we'll be posting this on the website, but to give you a quick overview, we will have a combination of, um, some phone appointments and, um, in-person appointments for open book. The phone appointments will be April 5th and 6th. The in-person appointment will be April 13th with board of review on May 19th.
Excellent, thank you for all those dates. Any questions on that staff or board? All right. Uh, item two, we have some, um, upcoming virtual meetings, including the village administrator search, so remember that this Friday, March 12th, um, we have the village administrator finalists coming to Oregon for their interviews and the assessment, um, with village board staff, so that's exciting. Make sure that that's on all your calendars. Mike, will you or someone just send us kind of like a reminder or info, like where to be when?
Yep. Actually, I was going to talk about a little bit under 8B.
Okay, perfect.
You know, but I, I'm happy to do a reminder too.
Okay. All right, um, and then we have, so make sure these dates are on your calendars, um, we have board meeting, board meeting on the 15th, there's a special, special personnel committee meeting on March 31st. We'll be getting April 5th off, that's exciting because there's an election, then April 12th and 19th, and then make sure that Tuesday, April 20th, special organizational board meetings on your calendar, except on a Tuesday, that often takes people by surprise. I will not be there, it will be joyous. You will be great, I'm very excited. Maybe I'll go have a bourbon at Ziggy's. All right, oh, and then you all have another board meeting on May 3rd. Okay, cool, thanks for putting those dates on there, Mike. All right, so then, under communication miscellaneous business, this is, uh, we're on item eight now. Item A, we have a discussion and possible action regarding the police department sale of 2014 Black Ford Explorer, we have a recommended motion to approve the police department selling its 2014 Black Ford Explorer via the Wisconsin surplus online auction. Someone like to make that motion for discussion or approval? Our motion by Jacobson, second by Glish. We have a, we have a memo from the chief on this, any questions for the chief on this one? Brother information Jenny, we appreciate it. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? Uh, item B, says of the village administration administrator search. All right, Mike, here you go.
So, um, the first interview is at 9:00, 9:00 AM that day, so I thought, you know, have the board meeting started 15 minutes before that and you do some housekeeping with Kevin and, uh, I mean, talk about the process that the board's going to go through that day with the candidates and then we'll have the first interview at 9:00 AM. So I'd ask the board to show up at, you know, 8:40 or somewhere about that, so, so we can call the meeting to order 8:45.
And you, and you want us at village hall, right?
The village hall, except if you want, we, we have been able to do it, we did a practice run, Jerry's going to do it via Zoom, we're going to also do it, uh, Zoom, if, if you feel uncomfortable coming here, we can do it Zoom as well. But we'll, we'll, we'll have the room set up safely, more than enough spacing between five or six of you to, uh, I mean, it's only going to be, if Jerry doesn't show up, it's only going to be five board members with Kevin sitting in the back of the room and the candidate in the middle of the room, so you're going to build lots of space in the room and, and we'll have plexiglass up too, you know, so you'll, you'll be safe.
All right.
Yeah, yep.
That sounds good.
Yep.
All right, and then the review of the draft employment agreement.
So this is the agreement that Kevin sent to us and then I sent it to Kyle and he did his regular revisions to it. And, um, so I wanted the board to actually see what the changes he made to it and, um, so, just, you know, this is something that he's always stressed to us on the, on the front page that, um, and I'll, I'll say this publicly, is I think we need to say this, is that on Friday, if the board selects the final candidate, you're not, that person's not hired, that person has to go through, it's still going, that person's still going through the process of doing a background. Um, I know it gets confusing for people because typically you do what's called a conditional offer of employment and Kyle has always said, do not do that, don't consider this as a conditional offer, the, all the in-person is doing is going through the next step of the process. And, uh, so, so this agreement, you'll talk to, uh, talk about this with Kevin on Friday, but you have to talk about salary, which you want to offer the person, so forth and so, but that's obviously at, at the end of the interview, so. But I wanted, I wanted the board to see the changes that Kyle had, uh, you know, put as far as recommended for, for the agreement.
Any questions on that? I always, I always think that Kyle knows best, so.
The, the one-
Out of trouble today.
Yeah, yeah, Judy, and the one thing I, I did ask, an email Kyle about this because he took out what's called in section 10, the whole harmless language and I, I mean, and it's, Kevin has told me that he had just sent, it's typical attorney, you know, not to pick on attorneys, but he had just sent us another attorney for another community and it was fine and then, you know, and so now Kyle took the whole harmless language out, so, um, that could be a, something that you may end up negotiating with the final candidate. And, uh, so, but we'll see, we'll see how that turns out.
Okay.
But you're right, Kyle has protected us very well over the years, so I certainly take his, uh, changes to heart when he's proposing them.
All right, that sounds good. Look like we have any questions on that. All right, so then we will keep going, item C, this is FYI only, uh, the joint review board approved a six-year extension for TID 4.
And, and the board may recall, this was important for the Lake Stone project, so, um, I, I think the joint review board members, including trusty Balik for being there last Monday and that they approved it and so, so it's good for the, it's good for the TID and it's good for the project, so, thank you.
Excellent. All right, I am D, uh, discussion and possible action regarding memorandum of understanding between the Oregon School District, employer of Amy Miller, and the Village of Oregon, the fiscal agent for drug-free communities grant, we have a recommended motion to approve the MOU. Uh, someone want to make this motion to get it on the table? Motion by Peterson and, uh, second by Jacobson, sure. All right, who wants to talk about this?
This, this is a MOU that Judge Cox prepared, uh, for the drug-free community grant where, uh, Amy Miller, who's a school district employee, will be getting paid through the grant and so we, we felt it was important that, um, since the, since we're the fiscal agent, we're paying, uh, someone who's not a village employee, that there be a understanding between us and the district, so, so Beth prepared the agreement.
And again, she'll, the money's coming out of the grant, right?
The money's coming out of the grant, yeah, we're not, it's not, it's not village money, it's coming out of the grant, yep.
Gotcha, okay.
It's more, it's more of a procedural thing we thought we need to have in place.
Sure.
Yep.
Any questions on this? Yes, Amanda?
Yeah, not, not so much a question, just a comment, I, I, when I first read this and saw Ms. Cox, it, I was like, what, you know, because I thought, on International Women's Day, I thought that should be Attorney Cox or Judge Cox, but I had a conversation with her and she said that was very intentional because she didn't feel that she was doing this contract in her professional position. I felt the need to just say something because I didn't want anyone watching to think that, that this was in any way being disrespectful and since she, she wrote it herself, that was an intentional decision on her part, so. That was it.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, sounds, so we have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? All right, item E, discussion and possible action regarding the Badger Tracks hosted environment user agreement and Wisconsin Department of Transportation, we have recommended motion to approve the agreement. Would someone like to make that motion, please? Motion by Peterson and second by Jacobson. All right. Any, uh, questions on this? Information in the packet. All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. So then item F is the presentation of the senior center 2020 annual report. All right, go for it, Rachel.
Hello. It's always helpful to look back on a year that's been concluded and last year was so crazy while we were living it, it was sometimes hard to keep track of just what all we were busily doing, but we were busy. And once we put the numbers together, we could see why it felt like our whole, uh, last nine months of 2020 was focused on food and telephones, because it was focused on food and telephones. And, um, this couple-page reports just kind of tries to summarize for people what we were doing during 2020, especially once things, um, went in an unexpected direction. So, a couple of the highlights were that our, our meals went up, the, the amount of meals that, uh, local seniors got went up 36% in 2020 over 2019. We served just under 15,600 meals, about 5,300 of those in partnership with Ziggy's and the rest being mostly all home delivered. Thank you very much to the community for stepping up and helping volunteer to get those meals into people's hands and to get people, get those meals packed. We also provided a bunch of shelf-stable meals in case we had to shut down due to the coronavirus, thankfully that didn't happen, we didn't have to miss a day, we were fortunate. And, and in terms of connections, we made a lot of connections with people, uh, our outreach contacts, which are, um, to people who aren't on case management services, our outreach contacts went up 198%, which was amazing when we went back and, and looked at it, but we found we needed to reach out to people to make sure they were having what they needed and those kinds of connections continue even now, um, even though we're talking about 2020, 2021, we're seeing a lot of connections where we're reaching out to make sure people are getting their vaccinations scheduled if they want one and that they have transportation to get to those appointments, so. The second page of the report, I mean, the first page also talks about other services that were available, the second year, or the second page, um, addressed to some of the other things that happened during the year. The, um, the building had lots of changes, not always, um, changes we anticipated, but it's an aging building with aging, um, mechanicals. And the staff and volunteer news is pretty interesting, during the pandemic, five of our staff were able to complete 19 credit hours of continuing education that we got in a grant for and, um, that was, that was, um, really helpful, they learned a lot. And so I just thought I'd, um, present this to you guys, so you'd have a sense for what you're supporting, when you're supporting the senior center, which you do so well, and, um, see if you had any questions for what we were all about last year or what we're doing currently.
Gee.
Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Rachel, just a comment, I, I really like how you succinct, you put everything and it's really a great, great overview of all the things that are happening at the senior center and you, you, you know, you can pick it up and just read it in, in a couple of minutes, but you see everything that you guys have done and I, I appreciate that, it's, it's very attractive, I like the graphics, so you guys do a really good job on this.
Thank you.
Yes, it makes it, it makes it actually, like, we, we probably all actually read it. It's like a 10-page Word document, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Jenna?
I agree with Randy, I was curious, uh, though, about how many seniors do we serve in a year, like?
Well, you know, and there is, that's a good question, I know we provided meals last year to 675 seniors, typically, um, in a given year, we have contact with a few thousand seniors, they're not obviously all eating meals, um, and that's one statistic that I don't have with me here tonight and I'm, I apologize for that. I do have, I actually do have that, um, and can email it to you guys, but I'm not sure if we served more total people last year or not, I would bet that we served more than we did the year before, just because we were concerned about people who other, you know, were, were isolated, that otherwise might have had no reason really to need us, so I can get that to you.
Yeah, it, it looks like y'all did a really, uh, nice job of pivoting to serve our seniors after everything went down, so.
Thank you, I appreciate the flexibility of the staff, they had the mentality of we'll do whatever the, the people need us to do and they did.
Excellent, great to hear. All right, well, thank you for putting that, uh, report together, Rachel, we appreciate it, appreciate your time and all the things that you and your staff are doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item G, we have a discussion and possible action regarding alternate side parking enforcement, we have recommended motion to stop enforcing alternate side parking on Friday, excuse me, Friday, March 12th, instead of April 1st, uh, would someone like to make that motion? Motion by Glish, second by Jacobson. Is, is this something that we do every year or are we just tired?
This, this was, yeah, yeah, this was Jenny.
We usually do it every year.
Okay.
Yeah, with the warmer weather and, uh, projected to remain warm, uh, we just felt it was fair to the community that we move away from it at this point.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah. I'm all, I'm all for this.
Of course, you know what that means, we're going to get a 20-inch snowstorm now, but that's okay.
Oh, that's terrible.
Mike.
Jenny.
We talked about it and if we do have something like that happen, we, we'll just work with the residents, I mean, it's, it's really, yeah, it'll be something we can handle.
It sounds to me like Mike has offered to shovel.
Yeah, right, right.
We know where we're putting all the extra snow, I can tell you that.
Usually do, Jeff.
And good news, it'll be late enough in the season, it, it should melt faster.
That's the best part of a March storm, yep, it melts the next day, yep.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? All right, item H, this is a discussion and possible action regarding the Highlands of Netherwood Phase 1A street acceptance, we recommend motion to accept the street improvements, storm sewer on-site sidewalks and curb gutter improvements as part of the Highlands of Netherwood Phase 1A. Would you like to make this motion, please? Motion by Glish. Anyone want a second? Second by Peterson, thank you. Any questions on this? This usually just means that, uh-
Housekeeping.
New developments are marching forward, so that's exciting.
Yep, this, yeah.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? Uh, item I, uh, this is discussion and possible action regarding the Highlands of Netherwood Phase 2 street acceptance, we recommend motion to accept the street improvements, storm sewer on-site sidewalks and curb gutter improvements as part of Highlands of Netherwood Phase 2. Who would like to make this exciting motion? Motion by Glish, second by Stitch, excellent. Any questions on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks Jeff. Item J, discussion and possible action regarding JC Park West, the geotechnical proposals, we have recommended motion to approve the proposal and contract from CGC Inc. of Madison, Wisconsin, in the amount of $10,320 for geotechnical drilling and testing services for the JC Park West design. Anyone interested in making this motion for discussion? Motion by Glish. We have a second by Peterson, all right. Questions on this, or yeah, Jeff, go for it.
Yeah, this is just part of, you know, we, we have, uh, Rettler Corporation is doing the, uh, preliminary, well, the design of the park and preparing the documents and part of that is to obviously start with some of the design of the structures, dugouts, um, foundations for, uh, backstop poles- obviously start with some of the design of the structures, dugouts, foundations for backstop poles, the we call concession building, all of that. So it's pretty typical. You hire the geotechnical outside of that contract. They solicited three firms. One was just a little lower, but we've we've also worked with CGC on numerous projects, both under our contracts or in outside contracts like this with CGC. And they've always done a really nice job and they're local. So that's why we recommended going with them.
Questions for Jeff on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion or I mean, opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item K, discussion and possible action regarding establishing summer hours for Village Hall. We recommend motion that Village Hall's summer hours closing at noon to the public on Fridays from April thirtieth twenty twenty-one to September third, twenty twenty-one. And have a note that Village Hall will be closed to the public, but village staff will be working. Someone like to make this motion, please. I think this is something that we've done in years past. All right, motion by Peterson, second by Jacobson. Any questions on this? Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Gina, you're right. We we does in the past. What it does, it allows people to take time off, but then still allows us to get the packets out because then then the person, we can have one person working up here just in the back doing the packets, not having to worry about covering the phone. So it it's it's worked out the last couple of years. So that's why we brought it forward again.
Excellent. All right. Favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, sounds good. Thank you. Item L, this is FYI only, we have Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association, the WMCA Press Release, requesting clerks, their staff and poll workers become a part of the COVID nineteen vaccine group one B. Once. So thanks for that information. Item M, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty budget amendment number two. We've recommended motion to approve this amendment number two. And someone like to make that motion, we can discuss. Motion by Glish, second by Jacobson. This is, we have information on this. Questions? Anyone from anyone?
Can you tell us like what we're doing here, what we're shifting around, Mike or Lisa?
Yeah, I let Lisa explain what she did here. Please do so.
Yeah, this is this is the annual on budget amendment that I do. So this year, there there was a couple additional things. There was the routes to recovery money, which I wanted to make sure that that got recorded. You know, so that the budget line item was in the same category as the expenses were. And then the other portion of this budget amendment is the chewing up of the public work staff at the end of the year because they record their hours based on where that what they've actually done. And as you know, we do a budget at the beginning of the, you know, at the end of the year for the next year, based on what our best guess is. And this trues it up because as we go through the audit process, we have to make sure that our expenses do not exceed what we budgeted. Otherwise, that's a area of that's written up in the in our actual audit. So I don't know. Does anybody else have any other questions about it or?
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Mm-hmm. Look like we have any more questions. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item M, this is a discussion and possible action regarding Bergamot Lots three sixty-two, three sixty-three and three sixty-four partial release of easement. We have a recommended motion to approve the partial release of easement for the Bergamot Lots three sixty-two, three sixty-three and three sixty-four. Someone like to make this exciting motion.
I'll do it.
Thanks, Randy. Motion by Glish, second by Peterson. Anyone want to comment on this from staff, what we're doing?
No, you know, everything we do is not always, you know, sexy out there. I mean, it's it's, you know, it's still some regular old work.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is just, this is just a cleanup. We have evaluated it. A lot of the easement still remains for drainage and everything. So this just allows the lots to be a little better buildable lots and up and out fiduciary there.
Jean, just a question for Jeff. Jeff, do they do they have do they have trouble like people being interested because they saw those easements?
Right, exactly. Yeah, especially on lot three sixty-three and three sixty-four. You can see how much it really goes into the building envelope and and so that that's the reason of that change. And and I I went through the stormwater management plans. I looked at the plats. I looked at the drainage. I can't find no reason for why that was there other than that that.
Yeah. I I know this came up some other time. We were like, what what is that about? Yeah.
Right, right. So nope, I I recommend approval of it.
Very good.
All right, any further questions on this one? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item O, this is discussion and possible action regarding North Main Street County Highway MM twenty twenty-one Utility Improvements Project. We have a request to advertise for bidding. So we recommend motion to authorize public works to seek competitive bids for the North Main Street County MM twenty twenty-one Utility Improvements Project. All right, motion by Jacobson. We have a second by, oh, let's do, let's go with Stitch. Let's shake things up. So this this is exciting. This is the is this is part of the big, the big project?
Correct, correct. This is on the county highway. We call it County Highway North project from basically Grove all the way up to McDonald's. This is the village portion of the project that we contract, which is the water main replacement and also some storms or some sanitary sewer manhole rehab and everything like that. So we come in, we do, our contractor will do all that work. And then we're also contracting under an agreement with Dane County to help replace and we pay for half of the roadway cost replacement along that whole stretch. So if everything goes well and we anticipate it will, by the time snow flies this fall, we will have brand-new roadway and water main and everything from Grove all the way up to McDonald's.
Great.
That is a there is a that is a piece of road that I think all of us, and we get honestly, we get a lot of complaints. The county gets a lot of complaints. People think it's our responsibility and they don't understand it's not jurisdictionally ours yet. So it it kind of makes us look bad sometimes. And I know the county's not happy with it either. So this will be, this is one next big step for us to be taking these over and getting nice new roads out there.
All right, any questions for Jeff on this? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, and MP, you have a COVID nineteen update. So first, we review of the new order number fourteen.
So with with the the data looking better, yeah, I know you've been reading about that. So the county came out with a new order and and lifted some of the restrictions. And depending on what's happening with vaccinations and everything else, you know, then probably the next order could even open it up even more. So I'll have to see. This is an effect for twenty-eight days, so. So the latest order. And then that led us to talk to the school district about the reserving of the park shelters and playing fields. And I do want to publicly thank Deb again, Deb and my car with the school district for coordinating our our reservation system over all these years. We really do appreciate it. And you can see this email that's in the packet, Jeannie, that Candy put together that we're allowing organizations to make reservations during the month of March. And then and then it'll be open to the general public as of April first. And and we're basically saying you can reserve the playing fields, reserve your shelters, but you need to be in compliance with the current Dane County order. So we're comfortable with doing this now than we did was a couple of months ago. We're a little nervous about doing it. So.
All right, any questions on those two things, board members? All right. And then item three under the COVID update is possible action regarding extending the use of the twenty twenty vacation time to September first, twenty twenty-one, rather than June twenty twenty twenty-one. So we recommend motion so that vacation leave not used by an employee's anniversary date in twenty twenty may be carried over into twenty twenty-one, but must be used by September first of twenty twenty-one. Anyone like to make that motion? That sounds fair. A motion by Jacobson, second by Peterson. I know there's a there's a lot of folks doing stuff like this because no one's nowhere to go.
Well, and now and now there's a real promise that, you know, President Biden was talking about that in May, if you're an adult and you want to get vaccinated, you can get that you'll be able to get be vaccinated. So it made sense to extend the this vacation use during during this summer, so people can use it rather than lose it. But then they don't use it, then they will lose it by by the first of September.
Gotcha. Yes, Jenna, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say that I'm really glad to see that we're doing this. I think it's a great way to thank everybody for sticking with it.
Yep, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second then. Those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then item four, police department lobby open to the public.
That that happened last week, but I just want to make sure that the board knew about and and sort so we get the word out. So.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. We don't have any reported committees. We do. We do have minutes not requiring action. We have minutes from the February eighteenth twenty twenty-one Oregon Fire EMS District Commission meeting and the presentation of the annual report by Chief Linsmire will be at the March fifteenth board meeting. That coming up.
That's correct.
No unfinished and no new business. We've got some future agenda items coming forward, which leads us to item number fourteen. The board will meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five print one C to prepare for March twelfth interviews of finalists for the village administrative position and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section nineteen point eight five print one E to consider its bargaining position and connection with the possible acquisition of one community bank building at one oh one Alpine Parkway and Beckett Lot at one fifty-three Alpine Parkway. And the board will adjourn from closed session. I have a motion to go into closed session, please. Motion by Glish, second by Stitch. Roll call, please.
Oleg?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
And Stitch?
Yes.
All right. So the board will go into closed session. So thank you, everyone else for attending tonight's meeting. If you don't leave the meeting, the lease will be kicking you off shortly. No offense.
You'll be gone.